You're recording.
Perfect, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's, I have 6:01 PM, so we'll call the meeting to order. This public meeting, public hearing meeting is being held by electronic participation pursuant to the municipality's procedural bylaw. Number 2021 dash 040 and section 238, 3.1 of the Municipal Act 2001 is amended. The meeting will be live streamed on the municipality's meeting portal and YouTube channel. The video recording will be uploaded to the municipality of Trent Hills website following the meeting. Approval of the agenda, it is recommended that the agenda for the public hearing, public meeting of July the 6th, 2021 be received and approved. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please?
Hello?
Moved by Gene, seconded by Rick. To call a question, please Doug?
Council Bratney?
Yes.
Council English?
Yes.
Council Kelleher McLennan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Matt Caff?
Yes.
Council Redden?
Yes.
Council Tully?
Yes.
Yes.
Carried by seven, your worship?
Thank you. Is there any disclosure of interest? Seeing none, hearing none. If anything arises, please advise the clerk. Public hearings, public meetings. These public hearings and public meetings are being held in accordance with provisions of the Planning Act. The purpose of the meeting is for council members to formally hear and receive public and agency comments. The intent of these statutory public hearings and public meetings is to receive public feedback and incorporate it into a recommendation report from staff. No decisions will be made during this meeting. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded for the purpose of creating a public record. Any property owner may file an application under the Planning Act relating to their property. The purpose of the public process in filing an application is to determine if the proposal is supported by local and provincial land use policies. The process also seeks public input in order to determine if any issues identified can be, have been, or can be addressed. Applicants or agents will be given an opportunity to speak on behalf of their submissions and to respond to questions arising from the discussion of their application. Interested members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application being dealt with at this meeting, hearing meeting. All persons addressing the council must state their full name and address and must direct their comments through the chair. Any information you provide at the public hearing, public meeting may be disclosed in a public record. If you missed the live meeting, have technical issues, or prefer to submit comments following the public hearing, you may email your comments to planning@trenthills.ca. The municipality requires these comments no later than seven days after this meeting to ensure the comments can be reviewed by planning staff prior to preparing a final recommendation report to be heard at a future council meeting. As a reminder to individuals attending the meeting, please turn off your video and mute your microphone until staff have concluded presenting the application you wish to speak to. Turn your video, turn on your video when you wish to speak to the application to ensure you are visible to the chair. Unmute your microphone when you are speaking. Once your items are complete, you may, you may leave the meeting. If you're watching the live stream and have unmuted your microphone to speak, please close your live stream browser window as there will be an audio feedback that will cause a delay echo effect. So the first severance consent application is B26 dash 2021 along with zoning amendment application C17 2021 for Mark Forrestal, Brad and Michelle Kirkland, Bannon Road, Six Line West, Session 6, Part of Lot 5, former township of Seymour. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, these are public hearings, public meetings for the following applications and as noted, beginning with severance consent application B26 2021 and zoning amendment application C17 2021. And I'll go into the purpose of the application on the next slide. Severance consent application B26 2021 proposes to create one new parcel being approximately two acres of vacant land from approximately 40 acres for residential building purposes. Retained portion being approximately 38 acres of vacant land would be eligible for a residential building as well. Zoning amendment application C17 2021 has been submitted in conjunction with the severance application subsequent to severance consent application B26 2021. Purpose and effect of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is to recognize the creation of one new parcel being the severed portion of severance consent B26 2021, which is two acres of vacant land for residential building purposes. Current zoning of the subject lands is rural. Zoning for the retained portion being approximately 38 acres of vacant land will remain rural. Official plan designation is rural, primary and secondary mineral aggregate resources. Current zoning is rural. Comments have been received from Neil Alson, manager of roads and urban services, which are in my council's full agenda package. This air photograph shows the the proposed severed portion to be rezoned as well and retained lands. Those are all the comments and and reports and we're prepared to answer questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Jim. I, I noted that Michelle Kirkland was with us. Do the applicants have anything further to add?
Hello?
Okay.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't know if there was any questions that were, that we had to answer.
We'll, we'll find that out right now. If you have nothing further to add, I will ask if there's any questions from, from council. Michael?
Thank you, your worship. It appears as there's been other severances prior on this one. Is, is there a number? What's, how, how has this property been severed?
Yeah, so I believe there's been two or three previous severances through you, Mr. Mayor, and this would be the fourth lot will be identifying that in the report that would come forward to council. You did speak to the applicants about that factor and they've prepared their own position to address that.
I don't think you can do me. I hear me, I don't think you can hear me.
Thanks.
Okay, anything further, Mike? Anyone else have any questions? Michelle, or do you want to address that as far as the severance, the number of severances, or is, will that come forward later, your worship?
They certainly can address it now. It's been discussed, but we do have information to bring forward when this comes forward to council.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Catherine?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm interested in the same sort of thing that Mike is, but possibly will the report also address the 38 acres that and what's potentially possible on them as well, Jim?
Yes, so I can certainly say that as noted, that the retained portion would be eligible for its own residential dwelling at some point in the future under the rural zoning. You'll note that the official plan designation identifies mineral aggregates, but for certainly the, the lands in question, I believe the aggregates were taken through a a wayside pit or quarry a number of years ago and there is a email from a geologist to support the information about that, that the applicants have provided.
Okay, and just a second question, your worship, about, about the, the number of homes that might be possible there, I guess is, is more what I'm questioning, whether the remaining parcel would just accommodate one, or if there's a possibility of further development.
No, I think it's reached, it's certainly beyond the limit and it's reached the limit and the applicants recognize that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on. We're now at severance consent application V27 dash 2021 and V28 dash 2021 and zoning amendment application C19 dash 2021 for Jeff Campbell, 80 concession, 3 West, concession 3, part of lots 13 and 14, former township of Percy. Mr. Campbell with us? Oh yes, I see, I see him here. Okay, go, go ahead.
So, yes, as you know, Mr. Mayor, this is severance consent application. There are two, B27 2021 and B28 2021, a public hearing, public meeting to consider these and the zoning application C19 2021. So severance consent application B27 2021 proposes to create one new parcel being approximately 1.4 acres. It has the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings and it would come off the approximate 43 acre larger parcel. Severance consent application B28 2021 proposes to create one new parcel being approximately six acres of vacant land from the same 43 acre parcel and that is proposed to be rezoned to M1 for a rental storage facility. And the retained portion being approximately 35.6 acres of vacant land is within existing communication tower would also be eligible under that zoning for a residential building permit. And zoning amendment application C19 2021 has been submitted in conjunction with the severance applications. So subsequent to severance consent application B27 2021 and B28 2021, the purpose and effect of the proposed zoning amendment is to recognize the creation of two new parcels being the severed portions of, under those severance consent applications. The 1.4 acre parcel with the existing residential dwelling and outbuildings and the severance for the six acre parcel of vacant land, the current zoning of the subject lands is rural and environmentally sensitive. The proposed zoning for B27 2021 will be rural residential exception. The exception is to the rural residential zone acknowledging the reduced lot size within the rural residential zone. And the proposed zoning for the severance consent application B28 2021 will be site-specific, general industrial to permit, to permit a change of use to allow, to, to allow the consideration for a rental storage facility. And the zoning for the retained portion being approximately 35.6 acres of vacant land will remain rural and environmentally sensitive and all environmentally sensitive zones will remain in place. The official plan designation on the property is rural. Current zoning, as noted, is rural and environmentally sensitive. Comments have been received from Neil Alson, manager of roads and urban services and from Northumberland County. Those comments were contained in the agenda package for council. And this air photo map shows the parcels proposed, smaller portion, portion at the south end with the house and other buildings. Retained portion in the center with the communication tower and the six acre parcel at the north end.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Any questions from council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the storage units, Jim, have you saw any drawings on them or what they may look like? Like, you know, this is entering our village and exiting our village and I just wondered if you had the opportunity to see them or not.
There hasn't been a submission of a planning report by the applicant and I, to tell you the truth, I can't remember whether that contained that information or not. We can certainly ask him to provide it. And it would also be subject to site plan control to address those issues of appearance, as you say, coming in and out of Village of Warwick.
Okay, thank you. That was my only concern. Thank you.
Great, anyone else? Michael?
Thank you, your worship. That six acre parcel that is designated for rezoning, that is most of that is a gravel, just a gravel area currently, is it not, Jim?
It's, it's a scrubby field through you, Mr. Mayor. There was a an unapproved entrance and a gravel parking area that was created on that property and for a few years I believe a transport truck trailer was stored there when it was not on the road. Right now, it's, it's simply vacant land.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ken, go ahead.
Yes, I just wondered how much more fill would have to be added there to, to convert that six acres into a storage area.
I'm not aware of the necessity of that, but perhaps the applicant is, if he's, there he is, sorry Jeff.
Hi, yeah, Jeff Campbell. My address is 135938, County Road 29, Warwick, Ontario. So yeah, regarding the fill question, it's actually a very level area, that six acres triangular field. So part of it is, Mike, to your comments, I think there's maybe two acres, maybe a little less that is, that a gravelly, a gravelly surface and the rest is currently being used for farming. And there is, I think they dug the gravel out of the ground right beside where they built the parking lot, so there's a bit of a hole there. So I think there is a little bit of a fill that will need to be put in that portion. It definitely needs site preparation, but it's, it's, it's landscape. And regarding the, the attractiveness, that's a, that was actually my, my first concern as well. I definitely want to build something that's, that blends into the landscape and so I'm, I haven't finalized on any, any plans on what the, the materials will be used to, to, to build the buildings, but I am planning as like a phase one to have two 150 by 30 foot structures. And they'd either be a concrete wall or a steel wall, but I'd like to make the colors more of a, like a green, green, dark greens or, or grays to blend in as much as I can to, to the landscape, not, not anything like a bright red or a bright orange. And I definitely take care into keeping the outside relatively clean and not have a lot of junk playing around. I won't have a bin to throw in scrap metal or anything like that. It'll be as professionally run as, as possible.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we will move on. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
We are now at item C, the proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance, closer in sale. Ken and Anne Heffernan, County Road 25, concession nine, part of, part of Lot 13, former township of Percy. James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as noted, this is a public hearing to consider proposed closure and purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance by Ken and Anne Heffernan. Allowance is concession nine. Part of lots 13 and 14, former township of Percy and between concession nine and concession 10. The applicant currently owns lands in concession nine, part of Lot 13, former township of Percy. Role number given here in the information, can see numerous public comments have been received. The people who have commented are listed here. That information was updated into the council agenda. There have been further comments received and we'll be keeping track of those through the seven day continuing public consultation period so that we have a complete record of those. And then the map shows the portion of the road that's being considered. And the area outlined in black, it's the Heffernan property. Sir, the reports, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. I see Ann and Ken have joined us.
Yes.
Any, any further comments, Ann?
I just have comments, like we have Mr. Mayor, 100 acres down in there, that part of it has been farmed for the last 10 or 15 years and we can't get to it. The, the people that farmed it don't want it anymore. It's growing up in, in weeds and stuff and I'd like to be able to get down in there to service that land, either bring it back into farming is my main objective. And cut down the weeds and stuff like that. As it is right now, we can't get there with any piece of machinery. Like a tractor, anything like that. So that's all we're trying to do is to get to that property and be able to service it.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Any questions from council? Rick?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things to you, Jim. I believe the Northumberland ATV club uses this area. And I wonder, we should reach out. I know Mike Gainesworth did send you an email, but they should really be aware. This reminds me of the Wardman Road as well, Jim. And the secondary question I have is, like, nobody wants to be landlocked in this entire thing. Is there a way of getting an agreement with all the property owners, Jim? Do you think that would be? That could be done?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a possibility. That's one of the reasons we do the circulation and we have this public hearing to see what the interests are in the property and what the concerns are. And then in terms of the ATV, yes, we'll reach out for further comments from them as well. So there's certainly always a challenge when it comes to roads and trying to balance all the interests and it's good to have this hearing and hear what all the concerns are.
Thanks, Jim. To, to Rick's question, yeah, Mike did send an email and his comments are part of the public record now. And then in answer to a question, I guess I have is, is there a way for us to have the road cleaned up enough for, to, to service that land without going through the closure of the road?
Mr. Mayor, that's always a challenge. It's certainly the roads manager and I have had discussion about this situation and other roads and it's a, it's a challenge, but perhaps there is a way that we can look at finding a short-term solution to address that access question.
Because I think that would, I mean, that would basically solve the problem is it would leave the road to for the people that do use it, like the ATVers and snowmobilers and hikers, but it would also allow Mr. and Mrs. Heffernan to, to
Get to it.
Look after the property.
Yes, certainly. And note, the clerk has been a great help in trying to address some of these situations. So we may be able to come up with some sort of short-term agreement that would allow the parties to do some improvements on the road. And take it to a certain point, but we always have to be aware of liability and, and the need for insurance and, and the challenges that these situations present to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Michael and then Ken?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, a little bit about, from what you said, I'd hate to see land that's blocked and not accessed and this piece of property also is severed by a piece of water. So you have a north and a south piece of property that they're looking to be able to, to maintain, maintain access to. Question, how many abutting properties are on this portion of the, the road allowance that we're looking at right now?
Based on the map that was provided through you, Mr. Mayor, it looks like there are four other properties abutting this portion of the road.
Okay, and one other concern was to have access all the way over to Richardson Road. Does this, I'm not familiar, I've never gone down all the way through this roadway. Does it access completely over to Richardson Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, I lived on Richardson Road in a and the road when you go in Richardson and you go around the 90, first 90 degree corner to the top of the hill, the road goes straight through there and that comes out at 25 and 35.
But I'm assuming that the condition of that whole road is somewhat similar all the way through, which would be more or less unpassable with any regular vehicle. Correct? Yeah.
I believe that to be correct, yes.
Yeah.
So is, is there anyone? Oh, Ken, you had a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question had to do with the, that's not on the property in black, but it's white and it's 271 and I just wondered if their access came off this or how they had access to that property.
I believe they're accessed from the other side, from the west and perhaps from Richardson Road. Have to expand the map and look specifically to see, but believe they have access from another open maintained road.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Gene?
I'm curious about the people that, or the numbers of people that are using this road for ATVs or snowmobiles. Where do they go when they come to the end of?
Exactly.
We can reach out to the ATV group and get a better idea of the route they take.
Okay, other, is that all council's questions? I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that has a question? Yes, sir. Eric, is it?
Thank you, yes. It's Eric Cowell, 166 County Road 35, down the road from the subject property. And thank you, Mayor, Council and municipal staff for this opportunity to talk. I've read, I've, I've seen the posting, the posting at the road and I've read it, some of the letters objection and personally, I'm in favor of this application. Coming from a farming family, I know they're not making farmland anymore, but however, there is some here to be used once again. I'm looking at the map and I see all the surrounding properties. They do have other access. They're not landlocked as Ken and Anne are. And I've looked at some of the other objections that, you know, that again, it's for the ATVers, the hikers, the geocachers. That as a liability, as mentioned by Mr. Peters earlier. I'm a member of the ATV club. I, I didn't even recall seeing that on our, on our routes, however, I'll, I'll have to have a look at that. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning, you talked about land use policies and within the provincial land use policies and the right to farm, this, this is one of the issues that, you know, that they discuss is, you know, access and you know, the, the Heffernans, the Heffernan family, they've, they've got a longstanding reputation as, as farmers in this community. And, you know, this is going to go a long way of helping them. You know, there has been some recent illness in the family. However, it's, it's all coming to, to a conclusion and we're we're happy to see that the farming is continuing. There's lots of corn and wheat being grown, so I, I just see this as a win-win. There's conflicting objections that some say it's, it's not good for the years and then there are some others saying that the road should be blocked off and others are saying, you know, people shouldn't be going in there because of trespassing, littering issues. And myself, I'm kind of surprised I didn't see the the, the issue of liability onto the town and as an issue as well. So just in conclusion, I think it's a win-win situation. As an issue as well. So just in conclusion, I think it's a win-win situation. If this application goes ahead and I fully support it. So again, once again, Mayor, Council and Municipal Staff, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak, please?
Yes, Roy Coburn, Bob.
Hi, Roy.
Turn the camera on? Hi, Bob.
Hi, Roy, how you doing?
Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to restrain myself a little bit here because I think the farmer card has been overplayed. Farmers have been driving in that road allowance for years. I've been there for twenty-five years. That is. A non-issue. They can access that with their tractors easier than, than any other vehicle. We drive our trucks through there. We drive our four-wheelers through there. Our customers at Valley View Estates use it as a nature trail. It's public property. And if it, and what you're saying is it's going to be converted to a private laneway. And in, in that case, that means that there's no opportunity in the future to have that roadway run through, out to Richardson Roads. Slash Highway forty-five, which could be necessary for nine-one-one issues as the area develops and grows in time. That which, that roadway, it would be a logical path to have cleared and opened up. To alleviate the traffic going into Hastings when, when people are coming up forty-five from Port Hope across over to Campbellford. There's many reasons that that should stay as public property. The other issue that I have is I have the property directly behind Mr. Mrs. Heffernan. They did not come and talk to me about this at all. This is the first I've heard of it about two days ago. And I, they want a lot severance. They want to build a house in there. That's what this is about. So if you're gonna. Which I'd like to do the same thing on the back end of my property. I have two boys that would like to build a house. So can we build more, have more than one severance if it's a private laneway? I don't think so. So these are the concerns that I have, plus many more, but there is no problem with access getting through there.
That was a clear and blatant why.
And an hour with a chainsaw, you can, you could drive your truck through there.
Thank you, Roy. Anyone else wish to speak?
Bob?
Yes. You gotta turn something off, Jim.
Okay. Yes, Jim Orr speaking.
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
Well, the one thing. If people want access, if Ken and Anne want access to their farm back there. I fail to see how closing a road or closing the access is gonna help that. The, the other thing, one of your counselors asked about the condition of the road. The road, the first, the east part. Is quite possible. I can drive my car down in there, a little Pontiac. Most of the way I can make my truck wherever I want to go. So the east end is good, the west end is passable. I haven't been in there for a few years, but it's, it always was passable. The other thing, I think Roy mentioned it was, was there was no real notice. Like I don't see, I didn't see one on the paper. It says you have to declare the, the property surplus before you can close it. I don't remember seeing that. The sign went up yesterday with a public notice with no details really on the time of the meeting or anything. I urge you not to close it. Leave it as it is. We can use it. We can farm it. And as they mentioned, all the other users, hikers, dog walkers, geocachers, whatnot. And the term, the unopened road, to me, that's not an unopened road. There's been residences back in there. There's still remnants of two or three of them. And as I read in, or put in my email, in eighteen seventy-eight, there was a residence on that road. The map that has been circulated is one half lot out. So it doesn't, it doesn't really show what the, what the real picture is. It was supposed to be declared surplus. I didn't see that notice. I didn't, I don't know if it was a notice. I never knew anything about it. Like I said, I don't see how closing the road is gonna help. Any of these problems. If we run it like if somebody mentioned, clear it out, fine, clear it out, then it becomes passable, more passable. That's my comments. There'll probably be more coming later. We have a period after this to comment, like a, in later date. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? All right, we will then go on to the next one. This is a proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance, closure in sale.
Sorry to interrupt.
Pardon?
This is Roy Coburn again. I'd sorry to interrupt, Bob. I just had one more comment or thought that might, might add, add to the, to the discussion.
Go ahead.
There's one, only one area on that road allowance from twenty-five over to Richardson Road that would need a culvert. Beyond that point, it would be very, it wouldn't cost a lot of money or time to, to open that up and have it more accessible. And I'd be in agreement for, with that for sure.
Okay, thanks, Roy.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the next item is proposed purchase of an unopened municipal road allowance, closure in sale. Victoria Hard Heffernan, one forty-one Victoria Street, Plan Thirty-three Lot Six, former Village of Hastings.
Yes, as noted, Mr. Mayor, this is a public meeting, consider an application, close a portion of a road. Plan thirty-three Lot Six in the former Village of Hastings, being a portion. Of an unopened road allowance between Plan Thirty-three Lot Six to twenty and Plan Thirty-three Lots twenty-one. And forty-four for Village of Hastings as identified in the attached map. Applicant currently owns concession eight, part of Lot Six, one forty-one Victoria Street, former Village of Hastings. Comments were received from Brenda Wood and Kirk and Amy Fleming and were attached to the agenda for council's consideration. We have the map showing the portion formerly known, or I guess identified as King Street on Plan Thirty-three for the Village of Hastings. And it is, I think it's about a forty foot wide. It's more of a lane than a road, I would say. Those are the comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I see. We have the applicant with us, Victoria.
Yes.
Counselors.
Thank you. Is there any questions from our council on this? Michael?
Thank you, your worship. Was there a proposed future use for this portion of that road that you're looking at?
My understanding is they're looking to add it to their existing property. I'm not sure if there's a proposed use or not.
Would you like me to answer that? Okay, we were looking at purchasing the side portion directly adjacent to our current lot. It is a very small one. But we were speaking with Liz Stillman at the municipality and she indicated that the entire portion needed to be purchased, which we have no issues with. Basically, we're just looking for additional space and possibly having an attached garage addition onto our current residence. And then just using, maintaining the space as the current owners, or sorry, the previous owners did before us and we are currently doing as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have, I, I've been contacted by a couple of people that, oh, oh, sorry, I'll get to you in a second, Rick. Thank you. I've been contacted by a couple of people that own lots behind there that would. I guess be landlocked if, if this, if this were sold. So I'm wondering about that. The, the plan shows about six lots back there. I think there's. We have received comments from one person that has property back there, but. I received comments from one other person who just got the, the notice today because he is, he's. A power attorney for his father and he didn't get the mail until yesterday. So it was probably before that, but. So he didn't have a chance to comment yet, but he, he will comment in the next week. And that's, that's his concern is the access to those lots. Rick?
Well, I think you answered my question. That's what I was gonna bring up to the, the six lots. I think they're number eleven on the map or something like that. And I was concerned about that, how, whether they be landlocked as well.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, your worship. Just to follow up on that, how do those lots currently have, have access? To their property? Is it through that road allowance?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So currently those lots are part of one large parcel. The road is not obviously assumed into the road system or maintained. It's, there's nothing there. There's just nothing road like there. I guess it's theoretical that those lots could be. Have frontage on that road if it were ever opened. It's my understanding though, that the parcel. Itself would be better off developed from Division Street where services are available as one large parcel. But that's up to the property owner to, you know, present their concerns. That's what the public process is for. And then in terms of other lots to the north and west. The Hope Street Road Allowance, which is a full municipal road allowance, is in that area. It's not, again, not assumed and maintained, but it would. It is a potential to access those northern lands. But certainly that can be addressed in more detail going forward.
If, so if I can just clarify, those lots that do have number eleven on the current mapping in the. Report, they, they all come out to Division Street, like they, the owners of that prop, those properties have. Access into Division Street, correct? Cause you said it's one.
Yeah, yes, it's one, it's, those lots are all part of one large parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I misunderstood from what I heard then, Jim, I heard there was two lots behind the, the house on. Victoria Street and then, and then the rest of the lots were part of the Division Street one is what, what, what I was told. So I, I may.
Yeah, we're, no, we look forward to getting that information and clarifying those concerns.
Okay, that's great.
Certainly want to hear that in detail.
Super, thank you. Any, any other questions from council? Is there anyone in the public with us that would like to ask a question of this application?
Your worship, I would. My name is Brenda Wood.
Yes, Brenda?
One forty-nine Victoria Street North. The road allowance abuts my property and my only concern was. Over land use. So if that's purchased, if a building is erected, whether it's attached or detached. How close to the property line it can be? If a business operation would be allowed to open on that and if any short term or long term rentals. Would be allowed to open there. So that was my only concern. Just looking at future planning for the community, I certainly don't want, you know. A garage opening up next door, an auto body shop or something like that, close to my property. And I don't think that's gonna happen, but that was my only concern. I just wanted clarification. From, from municipal staff on what could be built on that if it was purchased. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Brenda. Jim?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, so we did. Do some email response back to Ms. Wood and I can clarify that certainly the area is zoned for residential use, so. A business like a repair garage, automotive repair garage is not a permitted use. And to change that would have to go through a public process like this for rezoning. I think we've heard that the intent of the applicants is to add the land and use it residentially as part of their own current land. And they could. Add a building or add on to their current building and stretch it on to those lands once it became part of theirs. And the setback requirement from the side property line is one point two meters or four feet in the urban residential R one zone. Hopefully that covers all the questions, but certainly anything you think of, just let us know and we'll answer those questions.
Thanks, Jim. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to? To this application? All right, thank you very much. That would. Conclude tonight's public hearing, public meetings. So we will move to an adjournment. It's recommended that we now adjourn at. Six forty-seven PM. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, please?
Counselors? Hello?
Kathy and seconded by Mike.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, sorry, Council? It's Mark Forrest. I'm sorry, I, I missed my opportunity to speak. I'm not very good with this computer and I was hoping that you would hear me now.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make a comment about my application for severance. This would be for my niece and her family. It's just, it's a two acre lot. It's not farmland. It's just scrubland. And I, I really appreciate it if you would allow it to go ahead. It's just for their, their family home. And as far as I'm concerned, it's, it would be my mother's wishes to. To use it for the family, if that's okay.
Thank you very much for your comments and we'll add those to the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, we, we have a mover and seconder for the motion to adjourn. Doug, do you have that?
I do, your worship. Counselor Redden?
Yes.
Counselor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Bratney?
Yes.
Counselor English?
Yes.
Counselor Callahan McLennan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Metcalf?
Yes.
Mayor Crete?
Yes.
You're adjourned at six forty-eight, your worship. I will just conclude. The recording and the live stream.